Called order, the city council work session for the Zavro's Grant Forks Tuesday, April 26, 2022 is now five o'clock with City Council, please call and roll.
Mayor Steve Gander, Council President Mark Holstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Tim Mariah Paul.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Better.
Here.
Dale Helms.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Mark D'Merz.
Present.
Brian Larson.
Here.
Does turn of the quorum. First thing to do is turn over to Mr. Murphy to make a statement.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to make a quick statement about the meeting here tonight. I do see that we have quite a few people here in attendance. I believe it's about probably one particular issue, so I wanted to make sure that we were aware of what's happening tonight and what kind of meeting it is here tonight. So, tonight is a work session, a council work session, so at this type of meeting, the council then will review and discuss, in this particular case, the application. They will then utilize the, that discussion will be based on the application received, the public comment that was provided during the public hearings, and comments provided electronically. I believe we received probably three or four, and we forwarded off those, if you can have those electronically. And then this is an opportunity for the council to ask the applicant any questions that the council may have. Then we'll discuss any potential conditions they may wish to place on the application, and then we move forward for a vote at a future council meeting. So, since this is a council work session, the council may ask any questions they wish of the applicant, and the applicant would be free to answer those. However, there is not a public hearing tonight. This is probably a meeting that is open to the public, people certainly can attend, but we have had two public hearings on this particular issue, one at the planning and zoning, one at the city council meeting. So, this is the opportunity for the council to discuss this and then move it forward for potential action. So, that's my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on to number one, discussion and possible conditions for a special use permit for construction and operation of a hot mix asphalt plant. First thing I want to do on this, I know Mr. Ellis will be available for any questions. One of the things that came up with this discussion is having limited time permit, it's going to be three, five years, one year, some people commented on. I guess that's one thing I want to clear up first. I want to make sure that, A, we're going to be looking at this, and we have some restrictions that we want to put on there, if it's going to be a one year, three year, or a five year, or nothing. We need to discuss that first because, in fact, if we are looking at a term limit on this, we can't do it through this process. It's not allowed through Minnesota statute, it's not allowed for us to put that restriction on there. So, this process would cease. So, I want to move forward because I don't want to waste Zavro's time, the public's time, going through this and discussing it for an hour, hour and a half, then get down to the point where we're going to put limits on it, where we can't do it in this process at all, due to Minnesota statute. And I'd like Mr. Golstead maybe to explain that a little bit, and then I would like to maybe talk to the council and ask and discuss it, just on the term, nothing else. Because if there's not an agreement that we're going to move forward with no limits and no term on it, then we have to cease. So, Mr. Golstead.
Thank you. I guess, you know, essentially, this is a special use permit that's been requested. A special use permit is synonymous with a conditional use permit, and it's dealt with by Minnesota statute. Minnesota statute essentially says that any of these conditional special use permits have no durational time restrictions. If, in fact, you were going to have a durational time restriction, it would be a whole different permit that was being requested, it would be an interim use permit as opposed to a conditional special use permit. Under an interim use permit, it's a whole different application, a whole different process, and it would be similarly, from what I understand, like the permits that have been issued in the county for three, five, seven year timeframes because it was a temporary location, temporary use. So, at this time, under this permit, there isn't a duration, a length of time that can be, that can be determined or put on as a restriction, and that's specifically by statute. I've done the case law and the research on that. Also had that confirmed by the League of Minnesota Cities, so as to that issue, there can't be a duration.
Thank you, sir. I know the mayor just walked in, I just want to get him up to speed. We are, number one, of course, discussing, first, having limits on the permit as in years, how that, we cannot do that during this special use permit process, and that was my request to have a discussion first, so that we be respectful of Zavro's and the public of time, that if we're going down that route, that we give them the respect of that, not to sit here and then hour later, hour and a half later, discuss times and terms. So, I just want to make sure I'm clear on that. I'll start out with my discussion, and I think that I did go back through and I did watch all the footage, I read every email, I've read, listened to phone calls from people, and my feeling, and I mean, I'll just cut to the chase, I don't think we need to put term limits on it, I don't think there needs to be a three year, a five year. I think we can rely on the state and all the requirements that the state puts on these plants to be suffice. We can talk about different things, about watering the roads or different things like that, but I don't think, me personally, on the limits of controlling the permit for a one year, three year, or five year, I would not be in favor of that personally, so. And I guess I want to open up too, because I want to have this discussion first. Mr. Helms.
President, did you say that the, does the state, when they get the permit, do they not put any time on it, is that forever?
Is there with that land, my understanding correct? Once the permit's issued, there's no end date.
There is not an end date unless they are not in compliance with the permit, with the permit. If they're not in compliance with the permit, whether it's through the city, typically it's going to end up being through MPCA because they're the ones that are the monitoring organization. They would give the, in this case, Zavro's, an opportunity to become, to come back into compliance, and if they don't, then that's when the permit would terminate.
I guess maybe one thing too is that maybe offered up to the Zavro's, if you want to speak to, let's say there was term limits put on this, like say a three or five years, the investment that you have to make to this site, what those limits would mean to you as in your investment in that property and future revenue, so.
John Zavro, the amount of dollars we'd have to put into this site, we need it unlimited, we don't want to restrict it to five years, or seven years, or three. The county does have the three and five year and seven year permits, but those are temporary, and those sites move in time, so we are in favor of the unlimited time.
I mean, can you explain with that, your investment in that property, I mean, you don't have to be exact, but, you know, I'm assuming it's a large amount of money to...
Estimate between three and five million dollars would be the cost to bring that site up to functionality.
Thank you, sir. Any other council member? Mr. Better.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've heard from a lot of citizens, I've fielded a lot of phone calls, there's lots of concerns out here. I'm not saying that I'm against this site, but I think we owe it to our citizens to give them a timeframe to say, let it run for three or five years, at least then at the end of that period, then we can review it, and are there still the same concerns that you had beginning as there are now? And then at that point, we could look in making it a permanent one? That's where I'm sitting right now, that if we can't do a three or a five year limit on it, then I won't know on it.
Can I pose a question to you, Mr. Better?
Sure.
If you have a three to five year time limit, what, in what parameters, and who are we going to look to, to say, to make our decision at that time to extend it, to not have a time limit on it? What, I mean, are we, what are we going to rely on then, and from public opinion, or is this going to be data, that it's actually true data from whoever? I mean, I guess that's, I would like to know that, if we're going to say we're going to tell them, well, we'll give you three to five years, and then go down three to five years, and then who are we gonna, what are we going to base our decision on? I mean, is it, I guess, are we going to say, well, they've never had any problems, and nothing's wrong with it, here you go?
Yeah, and that's a good question, and I guess I haven't really thought about that. I'm going, I'm thinking more in public opinion again. If indeed there are problems, I'm sure that we're going to hear about it, year in and year out, smell, dust, what have you. Even at the end of the three years when it comes up, if there's a big fallout from it, our room is going to be full of people again. There are other things that have been suggested to put on the special use permit. Of those, I don't know what we can, but some of those might even eliminate some of these concerns. But there again, I don't know how much of those things we can actually put on the special use permit that would help alleviate those concerns after three, five years.
I guess for me, the idea of a shorter term is something to consider, but I agree with you, you'd have to have some objective criteria set in advance, that if you do these things, it rolls over or continues on, and if you don't do these things, it would end at that specified time. I don't think it would work to say, you know, we'll listen to the people and then decide again, you, for sure, it's, you know, we care about what the people think, but for this to be a legally binding backend parameter, you'd have to have the criteria set in advance so they knew what they had to shoot for. You know, what are the objectives, what do we shoot for? If we achieve these objectives, there, we've met the terms of. I would agree with that. I wouldn't be willing to leave it a little fuzzy on the backend, maybe this, maybe that, that wouldn't work.
I think to your point, Mayor, I mean, we already have MPCA, and we always, always have all these regulations that states set, so those are parameters right there, so that's what we should look at. And if there are some other issues that get brought up to us, we do look at them, yes, but those should be where they need to meet. If they're operating under the law and the permit use and not, you know, having any instances where they're being cited, I don't have a problem, but I, I like to know, I mean, I know Mr. Better has indicated that he would like to see that, okay? If, and that's one person on the council right now. So, if, I'll go back to my opening statement, is if we're looking at setting these three to five years, or whatever it may be, I don't want to disrespect the time and the efforts that they're putting forth, and start over a different process then, you know, and wait till down the road here an hour and a half, whatever it is, and then go, well, guess what, we're going to have this, this thing's done, we're not moving any farther because we have to go back to the interim, you know, permit.
I guess I have a question to your point, Mr. President, and that is, let's say they have the approval that would not have a backend limit, what is the process, maybe you would know, Mr. Golstead, say you have one violation, two violation, three violation, when is that permitting, when is it, when is it taken away? What are the terms of it being reinstated at that point?
Well, realistically, most of this is going to be controlled by outside agencies, MPCA, the EPA, but in Minnesota, it's the MPCA. And if you look at the MPCA's regulations, they are more stringent than the EPA, they're more stringent than Grand Forks, and they're more stringent than 90% of the states in the country. And so, what they would be doing is they're monitoring them on a yearly basis, they have to do their stack tests, I think you said, every three years. If they're going to modify the plant, they would have to essentially get, get permission to do so because it would be from us as well as the MPCA, I believe, because it would be exceeding the special use permit if we put that type of a restriction on it. You can have a 300-ton plant, you know, as opposed to an 800-ton plant. Those are some reasonable restrictions that I think we could put on it, but that would be monitored by them. Then they would have a reasonable time in which to come into compliance. Reasonableness could be depending upon the circumstances. Is it, is it an emissions issue, then I have no idea. If it's what people have indicated, that they think that there's going to be smoke going across the road, and it continues to go across the road for any length of time that makes it a traffic hazard, well, then that would be a much shorter period of time to be able to do it. Now, when I say smoke, that's kind of a misnomer because I don't think that there's going to be any smoke that's even generated over here, it's steam. But those are some of the concerns, and that's just an example that I can give you. I can't give you any, any definitive, it's going to be three days, five days, or 30 days, or 60 days, okay?
Would be to make the correction and then get back into operation, back into compliance.
Yes, and if they can't, or they don't, or they don't make those corrections, then, then the special permit, the conditional use permit would terminate.
Thanks.
I want to make also note too that, yes, we're going to look at all this stuff with the MPCA, yes, we are going to listen to the public too, if there's some issues out there, so don't misunderstand me there, that we are going to be respectful of the citizens and, you know, and listen to them. So, that's, that's not my point, I just want to make sure that it's known that we have to set standards that are, that are accepted standards that are already there, and they're extreme standards other than EPA, MPC is higher, so.
And that are enforceable, actually enforceable.
Yes.
And if I could just add to my explanation, when I say terminated, it doesn't get terminated just ad hoc. What ends up happening is, is the city would end up having to bring an action to revoke the permit. That permit action would ultimately be before the district court, and then you'd have a third, a neutral third party making a decision on whether or not they're, they're not in substantial compliance with, with the permit.
Reapply.
Just, Ron, to get this straight, if they do an interim permit, we put a three year, five year term on it, that permit ends and then they have to reapply for another permit for the...
They would, or you could potentially have an extension to it, but typically what ends up happening is, is that once that permit is, is three years, five years, whatever it happens to be, it ends, and then there has to be another application for it. So, yes, I mean, it's an interim permit, just like it says, and it's typically for just a temporary use.
Mr. Zavro, is your intention to build this and then sell, or are you going to, are you going to be around for a while?
Our business has been here for over 70 years, and we plan on being here another 70-plus years, that's our intent.
Thank you.
I guess it's still out there, discussion on, and I'll keep saying it, I'm not going to be disrespectful of time, and if you guys want to look at an interim permit, and we can move on to number two on the agenda item because it's done, so I'm not asking them to say that.
No, but I, I do want to say that if we vote no, or you go to the temporary, it's going to be another three-month probably process, and that'll affect us too.
Good point, thank you, sir. Mr. Larson.
Yeah, just a question on the, on the terms of the special use permit, are we able to define in that permit that this is specific to, let's say, a 300-ton per hour mobile asphalt plant? And then, you know, if there was a desire by the permit holder to, say, install a larger plant down the road, that would trigger another permit application process?
Yes.
Okay, or even a permanent plant, that would trigger another process?
Well, I'm not, I, the way it sounds, they're using this for a permanent location. I can't say a permanent plant, I don't know if all plants are, I know, I know, well, maybe they could explain that. I have very limited information or knowledge regarding the plants, but I think any, any of these plants are, could potentially be picked up and moved, but I don't know. So, if you want to address that...
Yeah, kind of what Ron mentioned there, all plants, they can sit there for long terms, or it's, they can be mobile as well, so it's, it's up to the user, how they preference it, but typically it'd be either or in this situation.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I don't know if I answered your complete question.
Well, you know, it was kind of framed around, we, we have a proposed site plan, it's, it's based on this, the size of the proposed plant, and all of the restrictions, the proposed emissions are based on that. That, that's what we know. We, we don't know about a larger plant, right? And so, there's the fear of the unknown that's left there.
And I think that you could, you could limit it to whatever they're, they're indicating. The other thing that I think we all got to remember is that the MPCA's emissions, for instance, standards are the same, whether it's a 100-ton plant, a 300-ton plant, or an 800-ton plant, as long as you are, are producing that product. And so, I don't know if it's necessarily the size of the plant that makes the, that's bringing the issue, other than the fact, if you're going to have a larger plant, then you could produce more product in a, in the same amount of, you know, time, so. And if I'm incorrect, go ahead and...
Go ahead.
I just want to address one thing there, Brian, that you mentioned on, that we provided on the supplemental packet, does everybody have this, I've got extra copies.
Yeah.
Reference in there, that figure showing the emissions, figure 5.1, and the charts right after there. Plant one is our larger 600-ton plant per hour, and plant two is our smaller 300-ton plant per hour. So, both of them are well under the MPCA and EPA limits. So, we didn't, being, it was kind of open, what would be brought there, we provide information on both plants to you guys, so.
Thank you. I guess more, for more clarification too, Ms. Ellis, I do have a question for you, I'm not sure where you're at. Going off Mr. Zavro's statement of three months, I guess, can you explain to us the total process and the front to end, just so everybody knows that from your aspect of it, let's say it did go back to you, what you would have to do, and then come back to us?
We do have, in our city code, the ability to have an interim permit. I've never had anyone apply for one. Usually when people are located within the city limits, they want to operate at that, at that site for any given period of time, so I guess, I'm unaware how an interim permit would work, however, if it's similar to any other permit that we have, that isn't just like a building permit, it would go through a public hearing process, it would go through the planning commission. I'm not sure, Ron, if interim permits require conditions?
Oh, you could, you could put condition...
You can place conditions on it.
It essentially would be the same process that we just about just went through, with the exception, it would be for an interim timeframe as opposed to, or a limited timeframe that could be placed on it as opposed to conditional use, which is non-durational.
Yeah. And then, and then we would go through the process again, after three years, public comment, application, conditions, et cetera, so.
So, it's...
It would be a similar process, yes, it would just have a time limit on it. I've just never done one, so.
Mr. Zavro.
Go ahead. Oh, and I just wanted to make one thing clear that Ron did not specify, is that if they cease operation for a year, or if something makes them cease, if they were to pull that plant, and the site became empty, then the special use permit goes away as well, because it's for the land, and if the use isn't being performed on that land, then we would start that process over again with the condition, or with a special use permit, so.
Thank you, ma'am.
That permit wouldn't work for us because we'd still be taking the risk of the mercy of one year, three year, zero years, you know, it, it wouldn't work.
And I'm not saying that's what I want to do, I want to walk through the process to make sure everybody understood that us looking at putting the three to five years is not allowed during this special use permit process. And I just want to be upfront with everyone and have that discussion because it's something that needs to be done, because, and if we, someone says they want to do the three to five years, then everything else that we talk about for conditions and requirements is null and void because it doesn't matter. So, that's all, respectful of you, get your time and everybody else's time, that's what I wanted to make sure of, so.
Yeah.
Yep, sure, appreciate it. Any other council members regarding term? Because right now, I don't have a clear, you know, direction, I guess, if everybody's, wants to not have term limits, if we, if we don't want them, then we can move on to all the other conditions and discussions. But if we want to set the three year, five year, then, like I said, everything's null and void.
President, I totally get what you're saying. There could be some folks right now who are a little on the fence about a term, right? And if the proper conditions were placed, suddenly their need for the term might go away, or might strengthen. So, they, the two may still be linked, you know, if you heard all these different conditions, you know, some birmingham here, maybe some ton parameters there, some paving here, some daily wetting the piles over there, maybe once hearing all those things nailed in into the mutual agreement and whatnot, maybe the concern over a term limit may go away. So, maybe we could, if, if there's no clear direction given right now, then maybe to go ahead and proceed with the discussion of other, other limitations or conditions might clarify that in the minds of our council members.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to make sure it was clear in some of the discussion here, so if, if the, if the council did want to look at doing interim use, then that would, we would have to really end this process and then basically end up denying this, and then the, they would have to reapply for the interim use. So, we wouldn't be able to really move a conditional use permit application to an interim use, we'd have to start all over, and they'd have to reapply for an interim use. So, I just want to make sure that that was clear.
That's correct.
I guess, Ms. Ellis, I guess if you want to go through the other conditions and stuff?
I just put together a list of all the conditions that were given to me by council members, or potential conditions, I should say, by council members, city staff, the Huntsville Township, as well as any other comments that we received, and I broke them out based on issue. Dust, hours of operation, days and months of operation, air emissions, different city code requirements such as traffic utilities, aesthetics, those types of things. So, a majority of them for dust are very similar. Aggregate piles are covered or watered on a routine basis, gravel road is watered, the road needs to be paved. That's one discussion that I was visiting with the Zavro's and Mr. Murphy about, is that when we annex property into the city and then it's platted, we typically have a developer's agreement that requires someone to have a hard dustless surface within a period of time, which is typically three years and that. So, that would be something that we would just set up a development agreement with them to discuss utilities and paving the road. Because it only leads specifically to their property and it's not a public road, while it's designated public right-of-way, it wouldn't be open to the public because it does not connect one site to another site, we would probably request a 20 or 24-foot minimum road. You have to have a minimum of 20 feet for fire and rescue. So, those would be some things that we would set up with them to figure out how they would pave it. So, that would be the first.
Can we maybe have discussion, instead of going through them all, having discussion in sections here about the... Having discussion in sections here about the dust and, you know, the things there?
Yep, so.
I think that'd be easier than having to jump around.
I agree.
Personally. One of my things on here that, I guess I would like the Zavros to address, the aggregate piles covered or watered. I guess I want to make sure that, that understanding of what watering the piles would do, or not do, or what it is actually. And I guess that'd be my first question on that, so.
I'm Dan Zavro, Secretary of RJ Zavro &amp; Sons. Our first question, I guess, about watering the piles on a daily basis. Couple of things that come to mind. One of the piles is rock, which doesn't blow around. The other pile, it would be sand, which for the most part is heavy particles that doesn't blow around. The one that was brought up at the last public meeting was the crusher dust. And that is, you know, basically rock that is crushed down into different sized particles. So basically on the small end of it, like the 200 sieve, which would be like a clay-like particle, that would be the free airborne part. That made up about 12% of that pile. So that is a small, small amount of material that would be on the outside of the pile that could be friable, and that would go out in the air, so. Adding water to these piles also increases the amount of energy that is required to dry the material prior to producing the asphalt, therefore using more phosphogals and theoretically creating more emissions. So watering a pile is not really an effective dust control on a stationary pile. Now, if we were to bring a conveyor to site and we were stacking material, we would evaluate how that material, what, you know, like if it rained for a month and you were bringing the material in, there would probably be no need to control dust because the material is already moist. And when you're piling it, then there'd be no dust that'd be flying off of that. But we have the ability to hook up water to our conveyors that would spray off the end of it, that we do when we're crushing, so that the dust doesn't fly all over. Now, covering a pile, I mean, that can be pretty cumbersome, especially with a small operation that we're going to be doing here is, you know, I mean, if we're going to do, you know, a couple thousand tons a day of material, we're not going to have huge stockpiles on site. So to have the labor to put a cover, like Crystal Sugar does with their sugarbeets or something like that, over top of it to keep the wind from, you know, infiltrating that pile, that is just, that would be pretty cumbersome.
One thing I wanted to add to, on the dust control. The dust control is actually monitored by two different permits we have to hold for this plant site. Is under our NPDS permit, obviously the dust control for watering. Like Dan mentioned, say we're using a conveyor. That's where we have to evaluate, under our permit, they give us the right to say, "We have to control it, but we have to figure out how to control it." For different operations, different methodology, because it is such a variable. But it's under that NPDS permit, the non-metallic mining permit, sometimes referred to, same in this situation, same permit. Also, under the MPCA air emissions permit, dust is monitored as well. It's also considered on the emissions calculations. Again, on that graph on figure 5.1, the first two items that is monitored is a particulate matter, that PM, that's your dust. The emissions calculation also takes into effect from an asphalt plant, say, on a gravel road five miles from the nearest highway. The travel of those trucks from that plant site to the nearest paved road is part of that emissions calculations. It's all part of a huge formula that's got to be put together to calculate those emissions. So that dust that may or may not be created from the travel of the trucks and elsewhere is monitored and is evaluated yearly based on our calculations as well, so.
I'm just going to go through my questions as someone else can ask questions too. Move on to the gravel road, the water. You talked about being able to do other things to that road other than water it. I mean, can you go through that and how it's been used in the past and who does use it?
Yeah, sure. A best management practice that is already in our NPDS permit is, would be watering, either on a daily basis or depending on the need. I mean, if it's raining, you're obviously not going to water the road. Another practice that is used commonly, like on, say, a MINDOT project, is doing a bridge in a rural area and they have to go, you know, around some gravel roads or something like that. They typically use calcium chloride. An application of that and then regular maintenance with the blade and regular maintenance with water keeps that calcium chloride activated, and that keeps the dust down. Also, reducing truck speed helps with dust in those areas. So, I mean, there's a lot of best management practices that can be used to help alleviate the dust issue.
So the calcium chloride, is that kind of typical? If I drive by Farmstead and they sprayed that by their farmstead there, they control the dust?
Yeah.
Because it's darker there and it's...
Yeah, that's the reason that that gravel looks like it's wet is because they applied a solution on there, which is attracts moisture from the air and helps hold the dust together or down when trucks are traveling.
I have a question regarding that. How long does it take you? If, let's say if it's a very windy day and somebody were to drive by and they'd be like, "Oh, that's a lot of dust." Would you have already addressed it? Or is that something you can address within a certain period of time? Or is it something that you have to order, or?
Well, typically we have a water truck that works with the paving operation. So there would be one readily available to remedy any issues if there was a dust issue at that point. As far as like calcium chloride goes, I mean, that's starting to be a little bit more of a process as far as getting it and getting it applied at the right time. But, you know, it's just basically placing an order and setting the schedule.
But you have a water truck then, available, so.
Correct.
Okay. I think that would be one of the questions, the amount of time it would take.
I think that's all I have right now. Anybody else have any questions on the dust? Larson?
Thank you. There's a ready-mixed concrete plant not too far from the proposed site, Portamix, now Strata, I believe. From what you are aware of, how the conditions are with piles on that plant, are you proposing a similar arrangement of exposed coarse and sand aggregate? There, I suppose the fly ash in the cement is in a silo. I'm just not totally clear on how the finest materials are stored within the pile in a mix or in a pile by itself.
Thank you for that question. The crusher dust is stored in a pile itself. And it's basically rock that we've ran through the crusher and made smaller pieces of. So it's still a heavy material because it's made of rock. But it is, maybe Jeff could possibly come up here and give a little better. He's our aggregates guy.
Sure. And I'm familiar with the number 200 sieve. And you'd mentioned it's a minority percentage of the overall gradation of that pile?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, right. Anywhere from eight to 15% of the crusher dust pile. And the crusher dust, depending on the mix design, is anywhere from five to 15% of the overall mix. So then again, we're talking a very small percentage of the total aggregates on site.
What I'm looking for is a comparable situation that we may have in town now. Something to, you know, put a real-world stamp on it. And, you know, would the existing ready-mixed plant be that comparable situation to what you're proposing?
I would, yeah, I would agree. Correct.
A man of few words.
So the only difference from what piles they have there is, we'd have dust on hand. They don't. They bring in washed, rock-washed sand. And we would have some of that there, but, you know, they don't have any crush dust on hand typically. Now, their crushed concrete would be very comparable to our crushed dust. Very comparable.
I'm not asking you to speak about your competitors, but do you know if they actively crush on that site?
I believe so.
They did, yes.
Yeah.
And then one more question for Zach, if you mind. Zach, if you could kind of explain from your experience, or Dan as well, from operating these plants elsewhere here in the region. I'm curious about how the dust control is enforced. I understand how it's a component of the permit and how it's defined as far as allowable release. But I don't, I feel like there isn't maybe clarity, you know, throughout the greater public on how do you prove that you're not releasing too much dust on a windy day? You know, how do we know that?
I guess the best answer I give is we try to be good neighbors too. Typically when we're working with a county or a township, and we go out there and we can see if it's a dry July day, windy. And you can usually tell, it's perception. And usually it's, they ask us to address it. You know, usually we have, like we mentioned, Nancy, there, a water truck available, or if it's a conveyor, we have to start applying water as we're stockpiling something. It's usually addressed pretty readily because it's a safety factor for us too. Like Dan mentioned, the haul roads, those trucks are traveling back and forth on those roads. Those are our drivers, we want to protect them as well. It's a safety concern there. And it's the same thing on any of those MINDOT roadways. They monitor that as well. And it just becomes one of those issues where we've got to take care of.
So that MINDOT, or say the MPCA inspector who's roving around Northwest Minnesota, is that a person that would show up on your site randomly and prove as a state employee that you are compliant and meeting your permit?
Yep. And then also with our inspections that we are required to do, we have to note if there is dust control and what measures we're using and how to prevent it as well.
That's the self-reporting aspect of it. I'm kind of more wondering, where does the third-party check come?
They do make surprise visits as well. A lot of times in local townships or counties, they live next door. You know, they live close by. Just like in this situation, they have our phone numbers. When we meet with the council or the township boards, at those times, we provide our phone numbers. So if there is an issue, we can address it, take care of that issue. In this situation, obviously, we would provide adequate contact information to whichever department or you guys would maybe want to administer that and let us know.
Who puts their cellphone number on the sign out front there?
We'll put John's on there.
That concludes my question, guys, thank you.
Ms. Ellis, any questions on the dust?
The next one is hours of operation. We've had a couple of suggestions, not operating after seven at night, before eight in the morning, not before 12 noon, or before eight in the mornings, or not afternoon or before eight in the morning on Saturday. So it would be an eight to noon. No Sunday operations. Some have done 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM. We've gotten a seven to seven. Just to be clear, the city does have a noise ordinance which addresses hours of operation for construction projects. So those are road projects, those are building projects, those types of things, any sort of construction that goes on. And that's stated already in our city code as operating on Mondays through Fridays between 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM, Saturdays between 9:00 and 9:00. No Sundays. So we already have an ordinance in regards to that.
Okay, with that, with time on that, I mean, it would be, to me, us saying that we have an ordinance in place already that controls the times that they can operate, matter if you're on a city street, anywhere around here?
That's for construction projects.
Right.
Permitted uses, commercial, industrial uses, they do not provide me with hours of operation that they're operating. So I don't go over to Fertilan to make sure that they're not there before seven in the morning and that there's nobody on site between 10 o'clock at night. What I'm stating is this, because this produces noise, we could address it in our noise ordinance, which states those hours of operation.
So that's, I guess my point is, in question is, since we already have it in our ordinance, looking at different hours of operation would deviate from what we already have. And would that be us looking at their operation differently than what we'd be looking at somebody constructing a road or doing something else, construction-wise in the city?
It wouldn't be, but I think you could still put that on as a condition to address noise because that is one of the things that you can address as a condition, is noise. So you could put those hours in there comparative to what we have in a city code. That's what I'm saying. As well, we already have an ordinance on that, and that's something that we would address for other construction projects. Because we don't have conditions of operation for businesses because we're not necessarily looking at their noise part of it, we could still state, to address noise, we limit their hours of operation to meet our current city code for construction hours of such and such. I think we can do that as a condition.
I would concur on that. The other thing that we have in our noise ordinance is there's a specific Minnesota rule that deals with residential, commercial, and industrial daytime and nighttime hours. It's already referenced in our code that anybody that operates in the city has to comply with. And so in that regard, the volume and the time of the noise is already controlled by our city code as well.
So do we have any industries that we do go above and beyond what we have in ordinance now controlling the hours?
Not that I'm aware of.
Nancy?
The only thing I can think of is if we were to receive a complaint in regards to somebody starting a house project or a road project before, we always address it at our pre-construction meetings. And we will send the police out there or our engineer, someone that's doing inspections, to notify them that they've started before hours of operation or after. So that's why we would address it. But that would be how we would do certain things. But we don't, I typically don't drive by industrial uses at 10:30 to see our construction projects, it's a complaint basis, so.
I guess, I think the question you might have been asking is if we're aware of any industries or any businesses that are in the city that we currently have, that we restrict more, that we have hours of operation that are more restrictive than what are in our ordinance? And I guess that the answer is none.
No, no, we do not. I'm just telling you that because that's based on a construction project, that's how we would address it if we were to receive a complaint.
Yeah, and I understand that. That's, I guess was my question is, are we restricting other industries other than, harsher than an ordinance is set already? And that's maybe, I just wanted clarification because I didn't know, so. Anybody have any questions on the time? Mr. Larson?
Yeah, just a question. And we've heard a lot of feedback from the public about concerns about noise, and that makes sense to me. But I am concerned that any restrictions we put on here, a future council or a future group could potentially use that against American Crystal Sugar, which is going to haul 24/7 during the campaign. And they're not far away from this potential plan. So I guess that's a question for you, Ron. Could any restrictions that are included within this permit be used in future litigation or complaints with other industries?
I guess I'm going to have to think about that a little bit more. However, if somebody's going to be making an argument that you're being more restrictive, I would bring that up. I mean, that would be an automatic, that would be an automatic argument. If you're going to allow one business to run 24/7 and the other one you're only going to allow to run, we'll say, seven to seven, if there was going to be a dispute, that would be an automatic argument that would be made. So I can't say that we're going to affect American Crystal Sugar or Trans Systems right now because of it. But if you were to limit the restrictions and there was some type of a dispute, that would become an issue, I believe, in any type of litigation or argument to a court.
And it could potentially, like, for other businesses that were to come in after this, so.
Correct.
Maybe I can, again, maybe directed toward the Zavros of times. And I guess what normal operations over the last couple of years that you've operated underneath and experienced, you know, I understand that weather does have a factor sometimes, and other factors do come into play. I guess maybe to address and maybe explain what your normal operation has been. And like I said, I know there's probably get some deviations of maybe it's, you know, some weather related deal, but maybe you can address that, please?
Typically, our hours of operation would be like, we start the plant at like six in the morning and have to warm up and then we get the trucks there, work during the day. We try to work a 12, 13 hour day is normally what happens. The six to 10 and then the weekends is kind of a holdover from our Polk County permit application. We, we wanted to, with the Polk County application, there's no mechanism in there to ask for, okay, can we work three more hours because there's a thunderstorm coming on a Friday night? There's nobody you can call to say that the weather's going to be bad and we've got to finish this area and it's a matter of public safety. How do we get this done? There's no mechanism there. So like, we went with a pretty broad range in the Polk County permit. And that, you know, we just, we held that over because we felt that that was a good range for, you know, potential operations. Typically, like I said, we're a 12, 13 hour day. If we work late into the evening, it's only to try to beat the weather most, most of the time, you know? We don't like leaving things open if we don't have to, if we're still paving. And so that, that would be our, that would be our typical day, Saturdays and Sundays.
Just one thing I would address too is, I mean, Sundays and holidays have been brought up. Typically for any large scale job and any job, our trucks have to be off the road the day before of a holiday. And Saturdays are usually, I think it was just a handful in the last couple of years that we've worked Saturdays for paving. And it's usually because of something either coming up or there's been multiple rain days, projects have been rained out, we need to make up time. We're up against schedules on all these projects as well. We're in a very short time window for the construction season the way it is. So it varies, just like the farming, farming schedule. You know, if it rains on Monday through Thursday, they're working all weekend long to get their crops off. It's the same type of deal. We're a very short window where we've got to make it when we can, so.
Zach, while I have you there, have you ever had to do, due to heat, a 10 o'clock till six in the morning because it's too hot during the day?
No, it's a good question. It happens a lot with concrete, but with the asphalt and on the roads, it's so dark, you would need to be able to see that as you're paving and adjust as you're paving. Night paving is very, very rare. We haven't performed it at all, so.
I've seen it down south on occasion, that's why.
Yeah.
They light up the hole.
MinDOT doesn't, doesn't allow without special circumstances. One other, while I got you here, we did a minor test. I know it was a concern, brought up a lot of our generator running on site. So we fired up, we coordinated with Stigard, we fired up their generator on Saturday during a quiet period of time, fired up the generator. And I got some photos of the readings that I'd like to pass out to you guys to just kind of show. Dan, maybe you can explain a little bit about that as well. Do the readings.
Thank you, Zach.
Who's generator?
What's that?
Stigard.
And this, yeah, this generator is equivalent in size to ours as well. So as you can see, the, excuse me, sorry. Top left photo there, door open, generator running. The meter ran at 101 decibels, pretty typical of it, a loud generator. Doors open right there. Close the door, stand 10 feet away. Louvers, like you can see in the picture there, are open, just like ours. Our generator is located in a box van. It's not, it's something so we can pull from site to site, transport site to site. That's 10 feet away. It drops from 101 down to 70. Turn the page, again, top left, standing 70 feet away, we're both same, 66 decibels. Now you walk across the street, go 300 feet away, all the way down to 53. And if you look at that chart I included, that little white box on all those pictures, these are standard decimal readings for different activities that may happen. City traffic and noisy traffic environments, 85 decibels. But you look all the way down at the bottom, a quiet suburb, 50. So that 300 foot distance, that loud generator is back down to what your typical environment would be in that, that area.
So basically, like, you know, if you, you know, sound dissipates further you get away from the point source. I mean, it's inverse square law. So basically, if we put the generator, if we set it up on the south end of our property and at that point, it would be 500 feet over to Highway 2, it would be 1,600 feet down the County 17 or 1,600 feet over to the nearest residence shelter belt. You know, at that point, our generator is dropping well into the 50s, which is just basically like regular highway traffic at that point. So, I mean, we have a lot of separation here from other properties and we're going to, that's going to allow the sound to dissipate quite a bit too, in these areas.
And the city's still obtaining service territory because we need to and will still apply for the permit to run the electrical line because that's what water and light does for a number of businesses or properties in the city limits of East Ground Forks. So the city itself is still working towards that because when you're next in the city, water and light does provide that service. So we'll continue to move forward on that if the permit is a go.
Anybody else having questions on time?
Dan, your hours, you'd like us to have a 6 o'clock morning, in the morning.
Well, I think another thing that I'd like to clarify maybe a little bit too is, I mean, right now, we can operate this site as a contractor yard, correct?
Yes, that's a permitted use.
It's permitted right now. So what are the hours of operation with that?
Dan?
That's on a construction project.
We don't really have any hours for industrial.
Right. So I think that's what, I mean, I think that's where this is getting really sticky here, guys, is that because, you know, are we going to restrict the hours of operation on the actual, on the asphalt plant? Are we going to restrict the hours of operation on the rest of the site? Because right now, there is no restriction on operation on the rest of the site. You know, we can go there and we can load the material. We can go there and unload material. We can run a generator. We can do everything physically on that site except mixed asphalt without this permit.
And I think my questions and comments were geared toward actually doing the process, not being onsite. So I think that's my personal understanding is you actually operating that, you know, within the parameters, not having physically standing there and doing something else.
Right, or having the trucks warming up or, you know, getting ready for a day, doing your oil checks, all that stuff.
Anybody else have any questions on time?
Yeah, unfortunately, right? Yeah, so basically, you know, towards the end of the season, we don't, we don't have lights on our pavers. So maybe you saw some of those on the pavers on Highway 2 last fall when they were trying to get done. But yeah, typically, we're trying to get off the road or get our rollers and everything off the road before dusk because that's when, you know, it's safest to get off the road by then. Usually.
Days and months of operation limit the number of days that the plant's in operation. Some suggestions have been May 15th to October 15th. Asphalt operation limited to May 15th to October 1st, May 1st to September 30th. You can do a six month period. And again, like they stated, we won't be limiting them to days and hours of operation for the contractor's yard if they choose to use that. But it's something that you can address when it comes to operating the asphalt plant itself. But I'm assuming they're not putting asphalt down in December, so it's limited. They had requested May 1st to, what was it, October 31st in the Polk County permit.
Any questions on the time for months of operation? I guess typically for you, if you have a job or multiple jobs or whatever in the past, I guess historically, is this normal, beginning in May, 10 of October? Just...
Yeah, typically, you know, obviously the weather's not right right now, but, you know, we could be paving, you know, on May 15th or on April 15th some years, you know, depending on how it goes. A few years ago, we had a big highway project over by Thief River Falls. We were shut down like probably the middle of October by a big snowstorm. Ended up warming up and, you know, we basically paved that first week in November because, you know, we were able to, the temperatures were right. So I think, you know, limiting, I mean, we can be reasonable with this too if that's, if this is a sticking point, but I, I mean, why are we being limited to? If the weather's good, why can't we pave? I guess that would be my question, you know? And we're not going to be paving asphalt in December, January, February, March for the most part. But why, why are we trying to limit the schedule? What, what, what value does that provide?
Especially when the construction season is going to include all the outside recreation months already. You know, these are the fringe months where you aren't going to be outside anyway. So there would be no gain to the residents to trim front and back.
Sorry, I mean, forgive me if I'm wrong. So are you actually asking for May 1st to October 31st or you're not asking for anything? Because I know in your packet, you know, you have, you know, the scheduled normal months is May of October. So I didn't, I just wanted to be, make sure that it's not what you're asking for. It's something that has been suggested in that.
Correct. That is not something we're asking for. That was part of our Polk County requirement permit like she brought up. We are not asking for scheduled on that duration, no.
Okay, Nancy? Any questions?
The next conditions that we received, recommendations regarding was air emissions, testing every other day when operation, hiring an expert. If the permit holder is in violation of any of the environmental regulations from OSHA, EPA, MPCA, related to air quality, water quality, stormwater management, that the special use permit by East Ground Forks will immediately be null and void. I did make note that when we issue any other permit in regards to building code, other things of that nature, where there is a violation, we typically give them a stop work order and then we make them bring it into compliance. And if they can't bring it into compliance with a certain period of time, then the permit becomes null and void, building permits, et cetera. So, and that would be something for Ron to visit about. But I'm, I'm not sure if we can pull it based on a violation because we do not pull other permits based on a violation. We have to give them a certain amount of time to bring it back into compliance, but we can issue stop work orders. Monitor and limit annual emissions to only one more ton than their current output at their plants that they've stated in the, in their supplemental information. Establish two odor monitoring stations, one at the Elton Peter home and one at the Raymond residence. The other one is a compliance audit for hot mixed asphalt, which apparently is no longer in use by the MPCA. They have a more current type of a audit that they do. It's really not an audit. It's more of a calendar where they test during those days. And Zach can explain that more, so.
Just to touch on that, yeah. Instead of, each time the plant moves, it's daily, it goes with the plant. It's a compliance calendar is what it calls. So it's that booklet, more or less it's your calendar. It's each day, certain parameters are tested, modified. And it, just like the audit she mentioned previously was in place, it helps the operator notice if there's an issue and report that issue and work with the MPCA to kind of, to correct things. The MPCA is big about, is getting things, they want to encourage compliance. The best way to encourage compliance is to work with people to make sure you're staying in compliance and giving them the tools to do that. So it's same, same process, but a little different form.
Any questions on this topic?
One thing Ron and I visited about the city attorney is that a lot of these conditionals have, conditions have to be reasonable, they have to be enforceable and they have to be defendable. And so I don't think we want to place anything on an air emissions that we can enforce. Reasonable in the sense that if we, you know, stating that they have to hire a consultant to be on site to test air emissions every time they're operating isn't something that we reasonably ask anyone else producing smoke, dust, those types of things, so.
Larson, you have any questions, sir?
Yeah, thank you. A question for Nancy and potentially Ron. The stop work order and then there's a, there's a period there to bring them into compliance before they continue work. Is there a defined timeframe to bring them into compliance before there's maybe a secondary action or follow on?
With the stop work orders that we've completed or that I've asked Ron to complete, is we usually give them two weeks to contact us, to sit down, where they have to provide us with a timeline as to when they would meet that compliance. And typically, in order to meet the compliance, they can't work until they've brought it back into compliance, if that makes sense. So if it takes them four months, then they don't do anything until, until those four months are up. It's all dependent on how quickly they can address that violation.
Is there language there where after so many stop work orders, the permit then is null and void?
In this case, the permit would be, we, to be able to revoke it other than the fact that they're not using it anymore, we would actually have to give them due process, which would be, which would be an action to revoke the permit. We could do a stop work order on it if they brought it in compliance. That's one thing. To terminate the permit altogether, we would end up having to do a revocation proceeding.
Press charges essentially.
If you want to call it press charge, it would be an action. It wouldn't be charges, so to speak, because that's a criminal term. But it would be, it would be an administrative proceeding which would ultimately be controlled by a judge on whether or not they were not substantially compliant. And if so, then it could be terminated. And the reason for that is this is a, this is a property interest, okay? It's a, which runs with the land, if that makes any sense. And so to do that, you need to revoke because you're taking that interest. If you want to think about it as like an eminent domain proceeding where somebody's going to come in and, and take your property for a dyke, for instance, they have to bring that type of a proceeding to give the landlord or due process of the revocation.
Maybe clarify for me, so you're saying that you notify them and it's two weeks before you meet them? Or once you get the notification?
They have two weeks to meet with us.
They could meet, they could meet with you the next day if you...
Yes, yeah, no, but they have up to two weeks to meet, to set a timeline. They could meet with us within the hour of receiving that complaint and say, we're going to fix it tomorrow. Or they can say this might take longer. And, you know, we're going to need a month. That's how we typically address violations of such sort is that they have, they have so many days to contact us to address said issue, so.
They would contact you right away and take care of it, so.
And then if it wasn't taken care of, that's when we would, the cease and desist or the stop work order would be in place. If they weren't being able to take care of it, we would bring a revocation petition before the court to say we want to terminate the, or revoke the special use permit. And then, in the meantime, it would, it would be a stop work order. If they would ultimately continue to work, then that's when I would go and get a, do an injunctive, get injunctive relief from the court momentarily to stop it because they weren't complying with it. Then we would go forward with the revocation proceeding.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Nancy. Anybody else have any questions on that section? Okay, Nancy?
Then the last one is just addressing certain types of things. Require the dry hydrant and the pond to hold 120,000 gallons of water at all times to meet Minnesota and city fire code requirements. The other option for that would be, that was addressed was that they would have to add city water. Review of that, visited with our city engineer to provide that type of pressure for that water line to address fire. It looks like the line would have to... have to be looped, so that would be approximately, oh, just a little under 13,000 lineal feet at the cost of 90 to $100 per lineal foot. Otherwise, they can use the retention basin that they have with water, have the dry hydrant. They can meet Minnesota fire code one of two ways. And Jeff, if I'm not mistaken, am I mistaken, or do you have any further clarification? Okay. Okay. So, and they have to meet Minnesota fire code. I mean, that's, that's something that they have to meet in order for them to obtain their certificate of occupancy, so.
That means if every time you want to answer something, just get out.
No, I apologize, I don't want to speak out of turn. I just want to, I wanted to point out something on that fire code. So we did the calculation, obviously, that the 120,000 gallons it needs, it's, it's a huge number, it sounds like. It's 600 cubic yards of that pond. If you put in those parameters, for us, that's pretty small terms. For what we're going to have to put in for a stormwater pond for that site, an infiltration basin, for that site, digging a deeper eight to 10-foot hole to hold 600 cubic yards is something that we can easily meet to, hit the standard for the city and for Fire Chief Bushy. It's, it's something reasonable for this situation where we don't have to run 13,000 feet of fire, or water line just for this sole site. If the city, as the city grows and more people are annexed in and the water line becomes available, obviously then it would be transitioned. But at this point with us, the only ones on this, this line, it's just not a feasible option for the situation. So just want to clarify that it's only 600 cubic yards converts to 120,000 gallons. So just a perspective. Thank you.
Another one was, the, the road needs to be paved. Again, I addressed that with our developers agreement. We do have some developments that don't have paved roads. However, that has been where we've headed with the majority of our plats, is that, you know, if it's going to be in use, that the road leading up to it is a hard dustless surface. If you're in city limits, and again, right now, it shows three years. That's all negotiated with the development agreement. Can't, plant can operate until electric service is in. I visited with water and light. We have to obtain territory, that is a process. Then we would also, the easiest way to run line into that site would be through the dyke, which would require a core permit. We've already discussed that with the core. They give us no timelines, if you've ever worked with the Corps of Engineers. That's kind of on their, on their time, but it could be as, as early as spring of next year if the process goes smooth. We're not sure, but that would be something that the city's currently working on. Well, probably because the, because the property is annexed, whether or not the permit goes through, we're still working for service territory because that's what we do when we annex property, is we immediately have to obtain that service territory. So running the line and getting that permit is just the natural process of any annexed property that we would, we would have. There was some discussion of aesthetics. Make sure that there's berms, maybe plant larger trees or a hedge row to separate it from commercial uses to the south or off of Highway 2. Those are some things that you, you could request. We've done that on the north end. And then, the one that was, was mentioned is the plant cannot be substantially modified without city approval at the city's sole discretion. If necessary, we could state that there can only be one plant located on site and they couldn't, I'm not saying they'd have two asphalt plants, I'm just saying that they would have a plant of another type. They can't have two on site. They would have to come back and obtain another special use permit if they were to operate a different type of plant. No, that's it for those. Length of permit is out. So we've addressed all the special, or the conditions based on the issues that have been brought up.
Any other questions that you may have that maybe wasn't on here that we went through? If you want to address them directly to Zabros or Ron or Nancy? Mr. Holmes?
Thank you, Mr. President.
I'm a little bit worried, when they do, when East Grand Forks does all these seal coat and overlays that they're, they do every so many years, is that the same process, right? They use the same stuff and?
The oils are similar to our, in the rock. Obviously, there's rock and the seal coat, chip seal. If it is a chip seal, seal coat is the same oil type. It varies depending on job to job, but yes.
My concern is that if we put these seal coat jobs out there for bids and, and whoever gets that bid, is that next company coming into town, are they going to have to follow the same rules? Are we going to have all this stuff all over again? I don't want to be putting rules on these guys if everybody else don't have to follow them.
That would be a construction project. So the only thing that we would be addressing in terms of that is typically with any sort of road construction project, and Mr. Emery can, can jump in if, if I'm mistaken. It's like any other road construction project. So we would have an inspector on site to make sure that they're doing it based on the process, or the engineered process that they're going to do, and then they would have to meet our construction hours of operation. Seven to 10. Nine to nine on Saturdays, but I don't, we have never had a company that's.
Typically, I mean, the last couple cycles that we've done our seal coat mill and overlay.
Can you come up front, Steve?
So yeah, the last couple times we've, you know, we've done our seal coat mill and overlay type of projects, you know, typically we've been getting local contractors, whether it's Strata Corporation, Op Construction. You know, again, if we get a Knife River Materials, you know, they already got their plant set up somewhere out in the, you know, somewhere around the country. So they're not moving their asphalt plant into the city of East Grand Forks to complete that project, so. Does that answer your question?
Well, I understand that, but I'm, I'm, I'm thinking that there, I guess that's probably my biggest point. If you get somebody from out of state that's coming in, and they might have a plant somewhere else, but they're still hauling the same kind of product that we're talking about here, are we going to have the same stipulations on, because that's the concern, right, is that product, it's all, it's all got to do with the product and the, and the materials that they're using, so.
I think it's maybe the mixing plant though, right? The mixing plant is what's the difference.
And I, I guess I can't recall where we've ever had a asphalt plant come into town, set up within city limits to, you know, complete any local paving projects. Again, you know, we have the Ops, Agri Industries back in the day, Strata Corporation, you know, again, those are, plants are already permitted, set up in Grand Forks.
And if I'm not mistaken, the question you're asking is, is are we monitoring the number of trucks that are driving down the street, or odor, or hours of operation, to which we do, because it's a construction project.
Basically, are we doing the same thing, are we treating them the same way as we would be?
Yes, yeah. We would, we would not be limiting the number of trucks that are coming in to do the project. We would be addressing the hours, because it's a construction project.
Yeah, again, yeah, we, you know, in all of our project specifications, we limit the construction hours to basically the city noise ordinance is what we match, right, within our specifications. So those contractors are limited to those construction hours. So, yes.
I know this has been covered also. We have clear indication from MinDOT and others that the volume of traffic that this would generate along those adjacent roadways, even around harvest time, is not a great concern.
No. Roads are designed based on average daily traffic, and then they have levels of service. Right now, Highway 2 is, again, a highway, and, and so they base it on somewhere between 15,000 to 20,000 cars a day. They do monitor that, but then again, it's levels of service beyond that, before they start addressing things like expansion, added lanes. They had no issues when I contacted, they don't monitor the number of trucks that Trans Systems comes through. They don't monitor the number of trucks that are hauling any other manufacturing. So this wouldn't be something that they'd be going out and reviewing how many trucks are coming off their site. Same with County Road 17. It's designed as a major collector. The only thing they would consider is maybe adding a right turn lane into, well, it would be a northbound right turn lane, just to remove some of that stacking off of County Road 17 if they were hauling at the same time as Crystal Sugar.
And there's no sense that County Road 17 otherwise is, is at or near capacity?
It's not.
Yes. Anything else? Mr. Vitter?
Thank you, Mr. President. I represent Board One and possibly Ward Two in the future, and I've had a lot of calls from citizens that are against the plant. Personally, I don't, I'm not against the plant. I don't think it's going to be any problem if we run it in the city. However, I have to represent the people in my ward, or potential ward. When this first came up, it was said they're going to apply for a special use permit, and we can tack on any requirements we want onto that special use permit. And I'm going, okay. Citizens are going to have issues, we can address those issues in the special use permit, and everyone will be fine and dandy. Now it sounds like, nope, we can't do any of the things in the special use permit. It's unreasonable, you can't do that. It's already addressed in city codes, no, you can't do that. So I'm back to, it has to be a conditional use for three to five years. And after that time, after they've ran it for three or five years, I am positive that the fears that are out there now are going to be alleviated, and no one's even going to know the days that they actually run. So in three to five years from now, I don't think you're going to see the opposition to having a special use permit for this plant that you see today, because today, it's the unknown. Everyone's afraid of the unknown. And we can't do anything on the special use permit to alleviate the fears, so therefore, I'm going to vote no unless it's a three to five year permit, and then we address it again in three to five years.
Have any questions?
Well, I actually look forward to having the blacktop plant for contracts that they can do, and maybe can save taxpayers money. I'm sure it will, if we, you know, save the city money if we could get, well, by competitive bidding. Did I hear a how?
Yeah.
Who did I hear that from?
I was going to say the city money.
Well, cheaper, cheaper contracts.
Okay, let's keep it on track here, Mr. Johnson. So now we have to look at moving to a council meeting. Do you want discussion on, any council members want discussion if they want to talk about, if there's no limits like Mr. Vetter indicates? Do you want to discuss those now and kind of agree on something, or, or a theory that we want to look at it and then go forward? I guess I want to make sure that we're doing it correctly and that we're looking at this on every angle, so. Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
President, would there be an opportunity, you know, of all the various possible conditions that we've discussed, would there be any chance to hear from the residents as to which of those conditions are more near and dear to them, and which of them they don't give a hoot about? So we don't have to put conditions on there. If we're trying to be as good of neighbors as we can to the neighbors, and some they don't care, so maybe we could hear which ones would matter more and which ones would matter less. Would there be an opportunity for that?
Thank you. I think even before that, I think we need to have either Mr. Goldstone or Ms. Ellis say, out of the list that was presented, which ones can we actually do? Because what I'm hearing, there might be only one or two that we can actually do.
Well, from my standpoint, one, it's got to be reasonable. Two, it, we have restrictions, and this is what we were talking about previously, or I tried to talk about previously, is we have restrictions that are already in place that, that control these things. And to go outside of those restrictions, whether it's the noise, whether it's the hours of operation, whether it's being able to drive up and down County 17 or U.S. Highway 2, those restrictions are, in my opinion, not reasonable because every other business in town can, can, can operate without having those specific restrictions. Now you've indicated that there's, and I understand that there's noise concerns, okay? We do have a noise ordinance, we can make sure that they're compliant. Just from listening to what they've indicated regarding that generator, now this isn't from the, the trucks, but from the generator, which was one of the major concerns that somebody had. From looking at the industrial decibels and the noise restrictions from the state level, those already comply with any type of a, a noise restriction that is within our code. Regarding noise in another fashion, if there's a considerable, you could, you could ask them to plant some trees that, which would cover a couple of things, potentially noise, it could potentially cover some of the screening issues. Those are the types of restrictions that we could put on it because there's been some visual acuity, issues or noise. However, to go over and above some of those things, it's just, you're, you're just asking for problems down in the, in the future because we are actually changing our code that we already have in place for this one specific use. And not addressing it or not having it uniformly applied to all other businesses that would be an industrial business or a business in town. So I'm not exactly sure what specific, and I can tell you what my opinion is, is if you say you would like to have some type of restriction, but I, I guess I can't get, second guess what your restriction suggestions would be.
I guess my point is, is that they applied for the special use permit. That's what they applied for. That's what I go off of. So to, to say, you know, I provided you information that's done on interim permits. Mr. Goldstone and I have visited off and on about it. I maybe wasn't clear with that, but they applied for the special use permit. So that's, that's all that I can process.
Sure, I'm assuming that didn't satisfy your answer, Mr. Vetter, but it reinforced it, but yeah, there isn't really anything that we could put on the special use permit.
You know, as we consider dust, for example, we'd require that road to be paved in pretty short order. Nancy, is that what I heard you say?
Yep.
And there was a concern about having to water a gravel road year after year after year, day after day, but it's going to be paved in pretty short order. And you guys are on board with that, if that's a part of our actual process that we go through? Any concern with that?
As long as it's permanent.
Right. So there's the dust, and thinking of, you know, rock like this, it ain't blowing anywhere, right? So to your various kinds of piles that you have, you're down to maybe one subset of all of the piles that could generate dust at all. How do we control that dust? Did we ever pinpoint that?
I thought they were indicating watering it if it was necessary, if it was, was blowing.
And how does that, you know, how do you quantify necessary? I guess that's, you know, might as well get down to that.
Dust would fall under a nuisance currently, wouldn't it, in our?
Well, it'd be potentially some type of a nuisance, but it's also quantified, or, I, I don't know if there's a, I don't know how to quantify that, if that's your question. I, I think that that's something that would almost be, if, if it's dust every day and you can't see across the road, then I think you got a problem. If you're driving down that road or a road and, and, but I, I have a hard time seeing this creating more dust than, than farmers harrowing their field right in town, or any of those types of uses that we already have.
But if we were to receive a complaint about dust going across MinDOT, we, we would take that, we'd prove. take that, we'd probably send someone out there to visit with staff.
And yeah, and to address it, obviously. MPCA and the other agencies, if you can see it blowing across, just like they mentioned farmers' fields, it's usually, it's a nuisance. One concern I have about doing special, every day must be watered. So in the industrial facility that's located next to us, Crystal Sugar, they have permits as well. In their permit, they have to, they're required to water daily during campaign. Doesn't matter if it's raining outside. So they have to hire somebody to go around with a water truck spraying down the roads during rain. That's, you know, so that's, I think, where Mr. Goldstert's going in some of these. Obviously, if it's a nuisance, we want to address it.
Common sense.
Exactly. That's all we're asking for. Thank you.
So kind of even though there's not a lot we can do to say, we're going to attach a special condition right there, one by one, we can sort these out. If it's a paved road, I mean, that was a big concern, trucks ripping down a gravel road for quite a section. Okay, that's off the, that's off the list of concerns. So even though we can't attach a special condition restricting that, we don't have to.
I would agree with that. And the other thing was with the noise for the generator, we're working towards that. It probably not going to happen this year to be able to get the permit to bore under the levy and acquire the territory. It very well could. However, in the past, working with the Corps to get the permit to bore under the levy to be able to get the cable to this side of the levy, it could take a little bit longer than that. It's not that we don't want to. It's not that we're not going to. But the first thing that we're doing right now is I'm working with Water and Light to acquire the territory. We do have a PKM agreement in place for territory acquisition. It's just a matter of filling out the paperwork and getting it all in place, and that's going to take several months to do that as well. So we're working towards those things. We understand that there's a concern, but it will be addressed just in a matter of course.
Any else have anything right now? Since now, we move forward, and this gets moved forward to next week, to a council meeting for discussion and vote. And then at that time, a motion can be made and conditions can be put on. It goes to vote. If it passes, it passes. If conditions get put on and people don't like it, they can vote it down, and then someone else can make a motion to whatever they want. I think that's where we're at at this point. Correct me if I'm wrong?
That is correct. I would just say as far as preparation, if there are any conditions that you do agree upon, or that you think it would be nice to get them, now we can get them included in the packet so that it would be out there, but certainly you can add them next week as well, so.
And to address the question of, if it's addressed in city, like as far as paved, we can set a timeframe on it, because we do that in our development agreement, based on phasing and/or when the property is developed or permitted, et cetera. So the limit in the, or the set amount in our developer's agreement is currently three years. We have had some people ask for a longer time period. We've had some people put it in right away. That's all based on the development agreement, so that could be a condition.
So we could use our development agreement three to five years, but have to deviate from that?
Yeah. But if you, if you said they have to have it, they have to have it paved within one year of operation, then if they say we're going to start operation next year, then that would be a two-year time period. Some people would say over the course of a season, freestyle.
Can I address our opinion?
Yeah.
We would like, within five years, to help absorb the cost, because we're going to have to pay for that half mile, and it's a lot of money. And oil right now is right through the roof for paving a project for free. So that would be one of our concerns. Hopefully, when this war gets over, oil will settle down, and it'll be more competitive for us.
Yeah. And it's different with residential, because we want it paved after the first lots are sold. So, but the development agreement sets it for three years unless it's discussed or...
Negotiated.
Yeah, negotiated, so. So that's why, that's why it can be set as a condition, because then that would determine how the development agreement goes.
And we would use the fluoride to not have any dust on that road.
Any else have anything at this time? Yeah, nothing? Okay. I guess we can move on then, and discuss it next week. All righty.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. President.
If there's people, oh, did Freddie, oh, people looking to talk about the, like you had said, water and stuff, just make sure that they know that that's next week. Flooding and...
Sure.
I know there were some people in here looking to talk.
Yeah, I mean, I guess if you were here and you had a question or you wanted to make a comment on the water issues we've had this last week, we do have a council meeting next week. We do have an open forum at that time, and at that time you can address that. You can also reach out to the city administrator and discuss it with him also, and he can pass it along. But if you want to come next Tuesday, by all means, so. All right. Thank you, Mr. Murres. Move on to number two, update on recreation facility improvement planning and local sales tax requests. Reed? Thank you. Need a couple minutes set up, Reed, or?
Oh, I think you should, see, plug in here.
If you want a couple minutes. By all means, if you guys need a minute or two, please.
You might need a seat.
Do I need a seat?
Over there, there's a...
I was thinking, I was just going to plug in right here.
Does Mr. Johnson have his up on his screen now?
Yeah. And maybe, yeah, hopefully you guys can see this on the screen as I plug in here.
But he's like, I'd set him down to Johnson, so he's...
Wait, sir?
Okay, thank you. I know that, just before I get started on this comment, or the, my couple topics, I know that Mayor Gander has some comments made or plan for afterwards regarding the flood, but I did want to take an opportunity, just quickly, because he represented the Park and Act Department for so long, to take an opportunity to share condolences with Dave Baker's family and friends. We lost him over the weekend, and he committed more than 40 years of his life to Parks and Recreation in the community. So services are planned for him on Friday, if anybody hasn't seen that. And just hopefully everybody takes an opportunity to take some time to appreciate and thank his family for his contributions to our community, so.
Oh, thank you for reminding us and bringing it up. I do appreciate it, so, yes.
You bet. So a couple of things, I'll try to go through this for the sake of time, just as briefly as I can, and hopefully you have an opportunity for some questions or comments as we get to the end of it. Just a few slides to go through with some updates from both the legislative perspective and from the work that the Building Committee has done in the last couple of months, to try to kind of bring this all together so that we're ready for a vote in November. First off, to start, the sales tax update, a couple of updates there since we last spoke about it. I'm going to start from the bottom and work my way up, because that's the most recent. Talking with Senator Johnson yesterday morning, was shared from him the news that he testified on our behalf last Thursday morning at a Senate Tax Committee meeting on the project, unbeknownst to me. He said that they were offered a very brief amount of time and that he felt knowledgeable about the project and thought rather than, than need to take more time on it than he felt necessary, he just covered the topic with the senators on that committee. I went back and watched the video of his presentation. I will commend him. He presented very well on the project. There were no questions from the members of the committee on the project itself or the tax proposal. During our time in testimony, there was one comment from a senator that is not in regard to the East Grand Forks project, but in regard to sales tax proposals in general. And that comment was, I think, and is becoming a common concern amongst representatives and senators on each side of it, in that the way the statute is written, the ballot questions, we know this well, you have to list that each project site is a separate ballot question. And within that ballot question, you have to list specifically the sales tax proposal as it relates to that project site. So in the case, his concern was that, in our case, there's going to be two line item questions that both say a 1.25% sales tax increase over a term of 20 years and then a dollar amount assigned to it. And the concern that he had, he represents Cook County, Senator Bach is his name, Hermantown has a request, Proctor has a request, there's a few from his territory, his district. And it, the concern is, from his perspective, that a voter may look at our project or a project in Hermantown and think that we're asking for, in our case, a 2.5% increase. And in Hermantown's case, it'd be a 1.5% increase stacked on three projects, right? And so there wasn't, or isn't, as far as I'm aware, a proposal this year to try to change that or to fix that issue, but it's being recognized at the legislature as a concern that was created when the statute was written a couple of years ago, changing the process of how a sales tax request needs to come in. So that was the only comment at the Senate hearing on behalf of East Grand Forks that came up. There were 14 more sales tax testimonies today at the Senate Tax Committee for local communities. Just a couple, like, themes that I think are relatable to our project and important. One, in addition to the multiple project request on a ballot line item, there's also been a recognition now that a number of communities got approval at last legislative session to vote for sales tax increases, but the statute requires it be at a general election, which is generally determined or defined as on the even years at either a presidential or a midterm. So in our case, that's this year, 2022. Fortunate for us, you know, we're in line with that. But, for example, like, City of Warren last year, they got approval last legislative session to vote for a sales tax, but could not vote because the statute limited when it could happen. And now they, they'll bring it to vote this year, but the cost of the project was expected to be 1.6 when they went for their proposal in 2021. They have designed the project, bid the project, and the project came $1 million over what their estimate was. And so now they're back again this year, asking for approval to increase their sales tax request from a $1.6 million request to a $2.8 million request. And that's, it's a common, Edina is there, Golden Valley is there, there's a number that got the approval last year. So they're also looking at how to, the Senate brought a bill forward today, asking that it could happen at any, like, city general election. So in our case, it doesn't mean as much, because we're on even years still, but just in the case of Warren, if Warren had a city election last November, they could have voted for it if this bill, the Senate bill, would go through. So a couple of things that are in the works, just, you know, maybe it won't mean much to us, because maybe we'll get it all through this year, but as we look at sales tax proposals just in general in the state of Minnesota, those are a couple of updates. On the House of Representatives side, again, we did have a testimony in March on that. And following our testimony, Mayor Gander reached out to me on his way out of town on vacation, that they were, their staffers, they wrote our bill, authored our bill, were trying to get back in touch. The way that our bill was initially authored, it was listed as a $21.5 million tax collection, and it wasn't specific to which project site that 21 and 1/2 would break down to. Their authors, to be able to roll it into the Greater House of Representatives tax bill, felt that it specifically needed to list the dollar amount of each site. So that's listed on the screen. We basically just made a quick impulse decision on it, because we had to, to get it in, is we reduced both project tax collections amount in a relatively, I don't know what the, I'm losing the word, but in a relatively equal term, just from what the total project request was at 37 million, down about the same amount, to get it to that rounded number of a 15 and 1/2 million project site at the Civic Center and a $6 million project total at the VFW Arena. Now, that presents the issue that the House tax bill has been, as a greater House tax bill, has been moved forward to the Senate for review. The Senate has taken it under review. I don't know that they've publicly commented one way or another on their feelings on it. The current bill that is in the Senate, still specifically just listed as a $21.5 million project total to be collected. It doesn't specify between the two project sites. So we're still a little, we're not in line between House and Senate. Ultimately, at the end of the day, if a tax bill's going to be approved, we're going to have to make sure those two things are aligned. So I would expect there will be an opportunity in the near future for us to make sure that, as that goes through, if there needs to be amendments made on each side of it, that we get those two lined up and make the amendments we need to. So I think, unless there, if there are any questions on the sales tax specifically, I'll pause for questions or comments on that. And then ultimately, just kind of wrapping this up, I'll go into some of the work that the Building Committee has done. And to close it, what I'm looking for, or hoping to get discussion on tonight, is as it pertains to the building projects and what I'm about to go through and show, kind of where we expect the budget to fit right now, and in relative terms to what our sales tax proposal is, is discussion and comment from all of you, if you feel like that's the right direction for us to continue to move forward. And if we feel like it is, just kind of a, the general consensus feel is, what I would like to do then is to be able to go back to JLG, and there are some changes and amendments to what those concept plans that we brought last year look like. I'd like to get them started on making the changes, so that the concepts on just a few of those concept pictures align with this project that we feel like we're ready to move forward, so that when we go back to the community with public information on what we're voting for, why we're voting for it, what will you get when you vote yes, generally speaking and conceptually understanding that that's what they're voting for. And so we want to make sure, just in the next, you know, in the next month to month and a half, as we hear back from the legislature and understand if a tax bill is going to be written in, and we're going to have a chance to vote on this, that that all aligns together. So that's the goal of the next part of this presentation. If there's any comments or thoughts on sales tax, I could pause for those now. Keep going? All right. Thank you. Okay, so, thank you. I'll try to keep going fast. I know I talk a lot. The project, as our Building Committee went through it, we looked at kind of two things, two or three things. We tried to break it into Phase One and Phase Two as a terminology to understand. The sales tax dollars, we want to go to the community and tell them, and tell them what we plan to use the sales tax dollars for. So we listed, kind of went through a prioritizing session within that. So we have them listed as Phase One, Phase Two, and then there are a whole bunch of elements that we just removed from the plan altogether. The Civic Center site first, really, the total goal of this is, as a committee, the general discussion and feeling in the group was that we want to do the best we can to keep this concept of the Civic Center addition improvements and baseball field improvements, both a full-size field with a turf field and the youth field improvements that are proposed, to keep those as intact as possible with the sales tax proposal, so that there's, you know, one real strong project that we know that if the sales tax passes, we think we can pull this off and get this all built. Okay? So that's the main topic, or the main Phase One, is the Civic Center site. It would include still the addition on the building to replace the locker rooms and create a new lobby space. It did get reduced in size. We reduced the size of it by a couple thousand square feet to bring that cost down a little bit. But in general, the feeling of that lobby space in connection to the new baseball field would be there. So that's, that's where the dollar amount comes in today on that. Just touching on the dollar amounts as we go into this, of course... Just touching on the dollar amounts as we go into this, of course, it's important to recognize that this is still just a concept plan and some pictures, some sketches, nothing has been designed. So when construction engineers puts these dollar amounts together, just like when we did it in September, they are essentially making just industry standard assumptions on if we're going to build an 8,000 square foot addition, this is what it costs today to do it. They tack on inflation or with the expectation of what we think inflation is for a few years, looking at a 2023 or 2024 construction time period, and then that's the dollar amount that we're left with, right? So this number will continue to develop and change over time, hopefully for the better for our community, as we get into an actual design timeframe, right? And we can start to design this thing out and make design considerations based upon dollar amounts and understanding where we could save some money here, where we want to make sure we do things the absolute best way possible in another spot. This is going to, you know, we can massage this number, is my point, but right now, this is kind of the industry expectation of what the work we're proposing to do would, would cost. The baseball field and connection to the Civic Center is the second slide. We did reduce some of the connection to the Civic Center and the size, and some of maybe the amenities that would go along with it to try to make it a little bit more economical or reasonable. It still would have that connection to the Civic Center and that you'd have, to have some retaining wall built to be able to connect what would be the third baseline of the baseball, the new baseball field as it connects to the Civic Center, there would need to be some retaining wall work built. That creates a little bit of a picnic, picnic atmosphere on that third base side, that's retained. The original concept showed like a canopy overview of that space with something over your head to protect you from rain or sun. Those types of elements we removed from it. So it's kind of just more of an open, open concept atmosphere now. Essentially, the site work that needs to be done to be able to build a baseball field there, but take away some of the bells and whistles of what the concept showed back in September.
Question for you there?
Yes.
And we've, and I'm just going to pick on you a little bit here. When we say baseball field, I know that we're also saying softball field at the same time, that there is equity for both those sports there. That ability for that field, that ball field to serve both sports, that's an amenity that is staying within this base budget, correct?
Yes, that is staying within it. Thank you for bringing that question up, it's important to touch on. When we talk about this as a baseball field, it's certainly sized and placed in that space like a baseball field, but planning it as a full synthetic turf field from fence to fence, we should, want to, need to view it as more than just a baseball field. It really is a multipurpose turf field, all the way down to the design considerations that can be done, even in, this would be something, again, we get to a design phase, that we as a community can work through and talk about, but a removable mound can be designed and planned for a turf field like that, where the actual elevated pitching mound is something that can be placed for a baseball game and then taken right off the field, and you could have it marked and lined to play softball in it. You could play lacrosse, you could play soccer, you could play any youth activity we run in the summer, could run all over that turf field all day long if there wasn't a baseball or a softball game programmed on it. So that's the way that I view it, that we as a committee view it, is that it is a multipurpose facility, for lack of a better term, being called a baseball field. Phase One at the VFW Arena, it, this step of it, the dollar amount you see here, really is what we expect it to cost to be able to bring the building up to as new as we can expect it to be today. It would, it would be the VFW Arena with the walls it has, but it would have a new ice plant, it would replace the roof, it would fix the parking lot, it would take care of all of the ADA issues. The interior works of the building from the air movement and air quality perspective, that's all included in this Phase One. What's essentially removed from it as we get into Phase Two is that building connection, that link that connects it to the Blue Line Arena with the lobby space that we talked about. The Phase One piece of it is essentially all, get the VFW Arena, make sure that it's, it's completely current and up to date with today's standards across all elements of it as it stands and looks today. The Phase Two of it then, again, as we go through, you can see the dollar amount at the Civic Center site is a little less. There's a few things that we would still like to see accomplished, if possible, but pretty minimal. And again, then the VFW Arena site is largely, these are all elements that are either the, either are the connection between the two buildings, or they're elements that really need either one, need to be done if we're going to build the connection together, or don't make a lot of sense to do unless we're going to build the connection, right? And so to reference a couple of those, like raising the level of the concourse and reconfiguring the bleacher access, that's something that we probably wouldn't need to do it unless we're going to build the building connection. If we build the connection, those two buildings are about six feet different in elevation right now, so we'd have to do some work in the VFW to make it a, you know, a level and accessible entrance from the connection back into the VFW Arena. The Blue Line Arena the same way, some of those improvements would need to be made if we're not going to build the connection, but if we are going to build the connection, the Zamboni, for instance, we don't want the Zamboni located right at the front and center corner of the Blue Line if we have this nice lobby you walk into, so we would need to relocate it to a different part of the building. And then a whole list of what we essentially have removed from the project. I didn't add up that total dollar amount, but just in general terms, when we get to the next slide, you'll see that our total project cost now estimate is just under $30 million at 29,700,000. The initial one was 37 million, a little over 37 million, so we've taken out about $8 million in improvements to this point. And hopefully, again, as we get through this project and continue to be able to get to the design phase and the work phase, understand that we think that there's other ways that we can work again as a community, as we've talked so much about being able to bring this together, whether that be through donated labor, in-kind services, all the, all the different aspects of it. But at this point in time, the estimates we're working with is our best effort to be a true and real number of what we expect it to cost a couple of years from now. With that, I think just any thoughts, questions on the idea of what's included in Phase One, what Phase Two looks like, and general thoughts on being able to update some of those concept drawings with JLG's work. Whenever we, if we, and if y'all want to just chew on it for a while too and get back to me, I think really the idea would be, in the first couple of weeks in May, get JLG going on updating some of these drawings, so that by end of May, we could bring back, again, an update on what the drawings would look like, so that we're prepared to start talking with the community about it once we get legislative approval on the, on the tax itself.
Anybody have any questions right now for Reed? If you have something, then you want to talk to him one-on-one, please reach out to him, email him, call him, visit him in his office. Vegas, sir. Move on to number three, request to update seasonal pay scale for Odover State Recreation Area labor positions.
Thank you again, Mr. President. Quickly on this one, talking with the DNR, we've, we're, just as we are in a lot of jobs across the city, these seasonal jobs, we're really struggling to get applicants, struggling to get people that are impassioned and skilled to be able to work in the positions that we have open. I would truthfully, will stand, I said it in the department head meeting on Monday, I think that a number of our skilled positions, skilled seasonal part-time positions in the city are under, probably underpaid for what they should be in today's job market. But the matter of fact is, is that in most of the other department lines within the Park and Rec Department specifically, we don't have the budget planned for to be able to pay a higher wage. And so the reason that I'm bringing this one forward to you now, it's those two things matched together. It's, we have very few applicants that, if you're a Department of Natural Resources student at UMC and you want to work in one of these positions, you can go to Lake Brunson or Bemidji for the summer and make five, $6 an hour more than you can at our facility. And it's the same state park, essentially, planned facilities, so they're going to get the same kind of experience at those places. So I would like to bring us to a little bit more of a competitive environment in that regard, and maybe that will help us be able to hire a few more people. Second piece of that is that within our budget that we have for the operation of the campground and the revenue share that we have with the DNR, we have space to be able to make this, this increase offered and still fit within the budget we have planned for this year. So I'm just requesting that this get updated and bring it forward to potential hires.
They have any questions? Tim?
One question, do we do any internship grants or anything that we get from state or anything for any of these employees?
We haven't had any, no.
Haven't gotten any, okay.
Better.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Murphy, all of our positions within the city are pointed and we go through that process every, what, three years? Can we arbitrarily say that this position moves up to grade nine? Doesn't that affect all the positions in the city then?
It can, I will double check, I don't, that's a very good question, and off the top of my head, I don't believe that these ones with the, with the DNR are in our, are in our scope of what we look at. I will double check that, but I don't believe they are, so I believe we would be okay with these particular positions.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? CNN, sir.
Thank you all.
Move on to number four, Consider Joint Powers Agreement with Minnesota Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force, Chief Hedlin.
Good evening, thank you. This one, I hope, is fairly simple, I'd be happy to answer any questions that I can. We were contacted by the State of Minnesota and their Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force, we would like to be, become part of that. This, basically, this MOU would allow us to do that. It provides us some additional access to data that might assist us in some of our investigations, and also potentially gets us some reimbursement if we have some in-depth investigations. That's kind of the biggest aspect. It provides us some additional tools and actually potentially could get us some reimbursement on some of these very important crimes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's a, it's obviously a noble task force, it's something we want to eliminate. I always, my questions are always about what does this do, like what's the organizational structure and why, or what happens, or what are we buying into, you know? So I guess my only questions are, does this significantly change like our current standard operating procedure? Because it kind of talks about, you will follow these rules in sort of evidentiary things or processing things or whatever. Does that change any of our things, and do we have to do additional training to become compliant on that, or is there not much different?
To be honest with you, I don't know the answer to your last question. I don't believe that there's anything significant as far as becoming a member, there would, there would have to be some additional training, but I'm not sure what that would be. My understanding is that this would be primarily our investigators, potentially using some patrol officers if needed, but for the most part, it would be our current investigators doing it. And basically, I think the biggest thing is we're already involved in some of these investigations, so this would just give us additional tools to be able to do them more effectively and with some support from the state.
The flow of information is important, obviously. What, what about our ability to, you know, autonomously direct work within the department? You know, if something comes up, do you or a sergeant or one of the investigators get to still decide, like this is the avenue we want to go on, or does this commit us to doing whatever the other agency?
Not aware of any issues with that, but again, I'm, you know, we just got this put together last week and I'm not an expert on it.
Like I said, I like the idea and I want the flow of information, I just, we see this, this kind of recurring theme of, you know, we're buying into these, buying into, we're associating with all these different joint powers, and then my feeling is, is at some point, do we just become subsidiaries of the state or the feds or whatever? I want to make sure our police department is running our police department, has the tools, but we are under their control.
Very good questions, and I can look into those and try to get some additional information out before next week.
And like I said, I want this to happen, but I just want to make sure that we are with our eyes open.
Has Ron went through this at all?
I've looked through it, and I don't believe that this agreement provides the authority for the BCA or another governmental unit to control our daily management of our own people. It would be more utilizing some of their procedures and doing our job.
Right.
And then getting assistance in doing so.
Sure. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Thank you, Chief. Number five, request to renew the memorandum of understanding for the School Resource Officer with this East Grand Forks Public Schools.
Thank you. Back in 2014, we were notified by the COPS office that we'd been selected for a COPS grant that provided us $125,000 in funding towards our initial School Resource Officer position. That original MOU that we developed at that time with the school district, covered a four-year time period, it was the three years that were covered financially by, partially by the federal government, and then one additional year that we had to do to meet the grant requirements. Since then, we've had one additional three-year memorandum of understanding with the school district. Essentially, it's just splitting the costs of the officer that's in the position. Initially, it was the, it was the costs of an entry-level officer. With the course of the last memorandum of understanding, we switched it so it was the costs of the officer that was actually in place doing the work in the school district. That's, this one continues that, and it would be just an additional three years. The existing MOU expires on May 31st of this year, so just a month from now. This would kick off then on June 1st and cover us for three additional years, essentially a 50-50 split between the city and the school district.
Has it been working so far?
I think wonderful. Everybody I've talked to with the school district, it's my understanding, this already passed through the school board on their end, so they've already approved it at a board meeting a couple of weeks ago. So my understanding is that's, everybody thinks it's a good, it's a win-win situation.
James?
Mr. President, just explain to me how the, on the, on the salary here, the difference between?
The two numbers, the one, we're looking at just our known facts, because we have a contract that's in place for one and a half more years, we're one year and seven months. So the first number is just cover from June 1st through the end of this year, so it's just a seven-month time period. The second numbers are the entire year of 2023.
Entire year, okay.
So you're looking at seven months pay versus 12 months pay. And then it would actually go on for an additional 17 months after that, but we don't know, I can't make any estimates on that because we don't know what will happen with negotiations for that time period. I just did what we, what we know, our known costs, which just cover this first 19 months.
Anybody else have any questions for the chief?
How old is that car?
I can't remember what year it is.
I mean, it's got to be close to when I started.
It's, I think we got it the first year he was in the school, and so it would be up in the, in the six, seven year mark now. At some point, we'll obviously have to retire that.
Right, I just was wondering.
So far, so good.
Yeah, interesting.
Your kids aren't old enough to get.
Yeah, I, what are your kids, I wonder?
Anybody else have any questions? Hey, Chief? I know we wanted to make some comments, did you want to start out, Mayor?
Sure. Partly, this is to give a report to our council members of what our crews have been up to. Partly, it's also, of course, for the community to know what our crews have been up to, and also a chance to say thank you to everybody who's been involved. And so far in our flood effort, there are many people to thank. We have the involvement of Public Works, Water and Light, Fire, Police, Engineering and Parks and Recreation. A lot of understanding in the roles that each of those individuals play, pretty well-oiled machine. The action plan is detailed and followed very closely, except when it's not. In other words, there can be some sudden changes that make us have to deviate from our plan, and they've shown the ability to do that. On Saturday, April 23rd, the crest prediction jumped by about 10 feet in a 24-hour period. As most impressive was the way our people took that in stride and adjusted their work plans accordingly. Nobody freaked out, pounded their fist, everyone made the appropriate pivot to their strategy and kept moving. Along with knowledge of who does what, the overall awareness of the potential hotspots that take place on the fly and what could go wrong is huge. Following about a three-inch rain in a short period of time, we discovered problems with runoff and surface drainage down the north end between 20th and 23rd Streets. Jason Stordahl and our Public Works crews went right to work troubleshooting the problem, identified where the bottleneck was and pumped around it. I know Steve Emery of Engineering was involved in that as well. By moving the water out of these neighborhoods as quickly as possible, they avoided a much greater problem that could have taken place. When this present event passes, we may want to take a look at improving stormwater drainage out of some of the areas of town. Remember the hail and the wind and the thunderstorm that came through on Saturday late in the day? Everybody remember that? Those all hit exactly while our Water and Light crews were removing the power hookups in the campground, and they worked right through the storm. They didn't pull off, they didn't let up, they worked right through it. Soaked to the skin, they knew this was the only option, since they were scheduled to begin installing flood closures the following day. When we sat down for chili made by our firefighters on Sunday about noon, they, the Water and Light crew, again, were soaked to the skin, all smiles and ahead of schedule on all smiles and ahead of schedule on flood wall assembly because it had been raining and wind and the whole thing also that following day. So thanks to Keith Mickelson, Todd Grabansky and all the Water and Light crew. Reed Hutton and our Parks and Rec have been engaged in the flood fight also. They shut off the water at every campsite, removed water heaters from the bathrooms, closed water lines in the bathrooms and removed the solar gate. Parks and Rec staff also removed bike fixtures and greenway trail signage and prepared River Heights Trailhead for floodwaters. Of course, then after the flood, they'll kick into high gear. Lot of cleanup on the trail system to make sure it's safe for users again. And because this crest could kick out a little bit, especially if we get some precipitation going into the weekend, that just allows that much more sediment and who knows what to get on those trails. So thank you, folks, for that. Just as an aside, Park and Rec members have also been dealing with some issues at our ice arenas, have had some water coming in to the Civic and the VFW. And crews have also been working to dry this up quickly to eliminate any chance for mold that could grow in there. And with cool and wet spring weather, our arenas have been busy even for alternate uses. Youth soccer made its home in the VFW Arena, youth lacrosse at the Blue Line Arena. The Civic Center's been busy with the ice plant retrofit that's underway. Chief Hedlin, Chief Bushy and our police and fire departments have been involved in planning, executing our flood protection strategy, making sure they can protect our citizens even as roads and bridges close due to flood, rising floodwater is their highest priority. They do it well. It's hard to beat Fire Hall chili with cheese and crackers, just as an aside. That was very good. So coordination with our friends in Grand Forks, North Dakota, once again, has been seamless. From bridge closures to emergency declarations, we've worked very closely together. I've spoken with Mayor Bochenski all along the way. Our emergency, our emergency manager, Fire Chief Jeff Bushy, has been in close contact with Grand Forks Emergency Manager, Karice Goltz, attending meetings together and making sure that we're all in sync. Couple more things, on Sunday, when we heard that our neighbors in Crookston were having problems, we put out the word and ISD 595 made a bus and driver available and a group of volunteers dedicated their Sunday afternoon, even into supper time, sandbagging and building dykes over there in Crookston. Among those was our council member, Brian Larson. Thanks, everybody. Yesterday about 7:00 AM, I got word from the City of Fisher Mayor that they were having trouble. We put out the word through Chief Bushy with the help of School Superintendent Mike Colness and Senior High Principal Brian Lor. And by 9:30 AM, a busload of 50 of our high school kids were heading for Fisher. I've heard from Mayor Emily Tinkham of Fisher that these students worked incredibly hard, behaved in a manner of which we can all be proud and lifted the morale of everybody they worked around. So thank you to those students and all who made it happen. Please let me know who I've forgotten to thank. We'll have next week, because the flood will not go away in the next few days. I'll try to catch up. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, sir. I think you covered it. Again, thanks to everyone who's been a part of it, so appreciate it. entertain a motion to adjourn. Houghfield by Johnson, second by Riappell, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, motion is carried, means adjournment.
You ate too much chili, Joe.
I probably would not have. I've seen the mayor.
What happened, what happened the last time you went for one of these? You got, they smacked your pickup.
I've seen the mayor.